The screen, I can't see.
I think we're good to go for now.
Well, I doubt that, but we're gonna whip anyway.
Give it a try.
Okay, just quickly, I have Tia Scott, Ryan, Bill, Heidi, myself, and Dan, and Keith. We have full board tonight.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Could we have a facsimile of the American flag, please?
That is a T. Oh, Joe's gonna do that.
Yeah, I sent it over to Joe after the last meeting.
There you go, Tia. Good job.
That one, if you don't.
There you go. Well, there you go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. With liberty, justice for all.
Good job, Tia.
Have we looked at the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
Yes, I had no problems.
I just had one, if I can find it, and it was on the last page. It was just a blah, blah, blah. Stated an application came in for a new cell town in Hennecker by Dollar General. Boy, that's I don't think that's what you said, Mark.
No, I think it was cell tower, Mr. Chairman. So we can fix that.
That's the only thing I could say.
I'm sure Kelly will take care of that for us. Okay.
I would make a motion that we accept the minutes as written as they will be corrected.
I'll second it.
Those in favor would be Tia.
Yes.
Scott.
Stan.
Ryan.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Heidi.
Yes.
I am.
Was I at that meeting? I missed one.
You missed it, Heidi.
You were out. Yeah, you weren't there, Heidi.
Wasn't on purpose.
No, things come up.
I will accept them. Dan?
I'm staying.
Okay. And next. Any projects of regional impact, Mark?
Yes, the application for a cell tower this evening is a project of regional impact by state statute. Per the statute, the applicant submitted communities within, I believe, 20 miles of Hennecker have to be notified by mail, which did happen. So that has, that notification was sent out to the regional communities.
Thank you.
Yep.
We've got a lot to look at this evening, and I'm sure there will be some confusion, but we're gonna try to keep it to a halt. And just. And they are two. Are you in favor of amending Chapter 133 zoning regulation as proposed by the planning board as follows? amend Article VIII, Section 113-31, commercial uses in CR commercial recreational district by amending CR permitting uses by adding the following as allowable uses: commercial light industry and commercial services, technical uses. Let's address these one by one, and I'll read the second one when we get to it.
Yep, and just to further expound on that, what this is gonna do is add two uses in the CR zone, which is to the south of Town Hall. Commercial light industry is defined as the assembly, manufacture, processing, packaging, and other industrial operations conducted in such a manner that all resulting cinders, dust, fumes, gas, odors, or smoke vapor effectively combined to the premise are disposed of so as to avoid any air pollution and conduct in such a manner that noise level at the private line will not exceed 80 decibels, and objectionable flashing and vibration will not occur. Commercial services and technicals defined as trades and occupations relating to the construction, installation, repair, or replacement of structures, equipment, machinery, or motorized vehicles, including recreational motorized vehicles usually associated with some kind of repair shop and garage, machine shop. We discussed this a number of times amongst the board members as far as trying to expand opportunities in the community for these types of uses, and we thought these two uses would not be significantly different than some of the uses that already exist in that district. I know it's not, when the recreation district was created, it was more recreation defined, but obviously, there's a lot of potential development down there of land that can occur with, that's not connected to recreation, and the board felt that these two uses were, you know, reasonable uses to allow to be added into that area of the community. So I guess if there's anybody on the call that has a comment relative to this particular zoning change, we ask them to raise your hand, which is available on Zoom, and and we'll let you in to comment.
Mark, if I could simply read in Bob Garrison's.
Yes, sir.
Bob Garrison, it came from his revocable trust. He's at 1409 Bradford Road in Hennecker. And on this item, the first of the proposed changes in the commercial uses permitted in CR, the present regulations are listed below. Commercial uses in CR commercial recreational district, CR commercial provides for commercial sales and services that complement the recreational nature of the area such as lodgings, restaurants, retail, sales, and services relating to the recreational uses. Your proposed changes to the zoning regulations seem to totally change the purpose of having this CR zoning area by removing the requirement that commercial activities in the CR zoned area is to be related to recreational uses. I and many other residents of this town do not want to see an increasing expansion of the industrial blight that is creeping across our town. I am not in favor of this change to this part of the zoning laws. Is there anyone else during this public hearing that would like to speak on this change?
I see no, no one has raised their hand, Mr. Chairman.
Are we ready for the second change?
No, I would suggest that the board make a decision to send this to ballot or not. And then move on to the second one.
Okay, what are the wishes of the planning board?
I'll make a motion to send the amending of Chapter 133 as proposed for that first part.
I'll second.
Let me get my.
Scott? Do you second that, Scott?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Tia?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Bill?
With, oh, he went dead again. Thumbs up. His thumbs up.
Okay, Heidi?
Yes, and I live in that zone, just so you know.
I will approve that. Dan?
Yes.
Seems to be the consensus. Moving on to the second portion. Don't let me forget that I also have Robert's.
Comments on that? Yes, sir.
Are you in favor of amending Chapter 133 zoning regulations as proposed by the planning board as follows? To amend Article XIII Administration, Section 133, permit required for certain construction by deleting this paragraph in its entirety and replacing this section with the following standalone ordinance. Adoption of the town, Hennecker Town Ordinance in accordance with RSA 674,51, Building Code to establish uniform rules and regulations for the construction of buildings with the corporate limits of the Town of Hennecker adoption RSA 674,51, Housing Standards Ordinance provided for health-based provisions to simplify and complement existing policies, ordinances, codes, and laws already in use by the Town of Hennecker and the State of New Hampshire for the upkeep of existing homes. These standards shall not be applicable to owner-occupied single and two-family dwellings. Also, adoption of RSA 31,39-C, citations.
Okay, again, if there are any public comments, please raise your hand to be recognized, and we'll unlock you and hear what you have to say.
I'll take this opportunity to read this paragraph from Robert. Robert Garrison Revocable Trust. "The second of these proposed changes seem to totally remove the present zoning law section that is listed below and replace it with a mess of other regulations. Permit not required for certain constructions amended 312, 1991, 313, 2001, 312, 2002. To provide all homeowners with an exemption from building permits, building permit fees, building inspections, and building permit oversight by any of the Town of Hennecker officials for all home improvements with a material value of $5,000 or less. The exemption will apply to work performed by the homeowner or his agent, and specifically will allow all labor of any value to be exempted. The owner will be relied upon to confirm the materials cost if the Board of Selectmen vote to request that specific affirmation in open session of regular meeting of the Board. Only elected Board members may make the affirmation request, and the authority of this purpose may not be delegated. One formal majority vote by the Board for each request to each homeowner is also required. The homeowner's receipts for these materials will constitute proof. No additional requirement shall be made. The purpose of this exemption is to allow homeowners to make improvements that the homeowner deems reasonable to their property without interference from the town. We need to be able to work on our property and be able to make reasonable changes without piles of paperwork, cost of permits, and the waste of time to deal with petty bureaucrats. I am not in favor of this change to this part of the zoning laws, whether whatever happened to live free or die in New Hampshire."
Couldn't have said it better if he was standing here on himself.
Well. Are there any other people which would like to put their input into this change?
I don't see any. What do you, Joe? No. I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, can we have a motion?
Is my mic on?
Yes, Bill.
All right, I'll make a motion to amend Chapter 133 zoning regulations as proposed by adopting the Hennecker Town Ordinance RSA 674,51, Building Codes, and also the adoption of RSA 31,39-C citations.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Those in favor, Tia?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
I do, and Dan?
Yes.
I would say that that carries.
All right, those will both be on the ballot for Town Meeting this coming in a few months here. All right, Mr. Chairman. We are now going to move to our site plan case.
Which I'm desperately looking for.
Is someone watching the chat feature? There was a party on there that said they were not notified by mail.
Yeah, I was gonna get to that, Heidi, just a second. Yeah, thank you, thank you. Yeah, we need to figure that out.
This will open up the discussion on Public Hearing 2021, Colon 01, Proposed Site Plan Application for the Construction of 150-Foot Monopole Wireless Communication Tower and Accessor Equipment, 796 Liberty Hill Road. Owner Tom Patonon, 2012 Revocable Trust, and K. Goss Revocable Trust, Applicant Vertex Power Assets, LEC, MAP 1-Dash-65, Zoned RR.
All right, before we start, can we have a mess? Uh, no, no, I would suggest that the board not accept this application this evening until such time we get into a discussion of the merits of the project and then also decide upon the balloon test that's gonna occur. Once you have the results of that balloon test and the visual impact assessment back in front of the board, I believe at that time it'd be appropriate to accept the application as complete, and then we can proceed there. We do have a note from a woman. If I can. From Allison Goss.
Alyssa.
Alyssa Goss, I'm sorry, said who has stated that she has not received notification about the tower, so I'm gonna unmute her. Allison, am I muting you?
Alyssa.
Alyssa, sorry. Yeah, I just wanna get some information, because we do have a Butters list here, and can you hear us, Alyssa? You're gonna have to unmute yourself.
Is she on the Butters list, Mark?
No, she's not.
Looks like she had the same problem I had with.
Now, she's muted.
Going back and forth, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I unmuted her, though. I mean, did Joe jump off?
Yeah, he said he was gonna hang.
Oh, Fran, I wanna let the attorney in also for the case. The host is not allowing tip-ins done by themselves. Yeah, I understand that. I allowed her to unmute. Alyssa, can you unmute yourself? If you go down to the bottom left-hand corner of the screen, you can unmute yourself. Oh, did I do the wrong one, Allison?
Al, it says Allison.
Yeah, maybe that was the problem. Oh, I'm sorry. I gotta get better eyeglasses.
Hello?
Hi, Alyssa.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I'm sorry. I was unmuting the wrong person.
I live at 492 Liberty Hill Road with my parents, Donald Goss and Don Blanchard. And I just wanna point out that the only information that I've gotten about this project has come entirely from my cousin Billy Goss, who I think is getting it from his brother. There hasn't been any effort to inform any of the people who actually live here about these plans, and the only reason we know about it is because we noticed surveyors coming onto the hill and marking stuff. And I'm sure if my neighbors had known about this, they would also would have liked to be at this meeting, particularly my neighbor Liz Sweeney, who lives, would be living like right under this proposed tower.
So Alyssa, under the state statute, the only people that need to be notified under state statute and town rules are Butters to the parcel in which the tower is gonna be located. So if the property you live on does not abut this lot, you would not get noticed.
All right, but I would think that my neighbor Liz, who lives next door to the lot, would be notified, wouldn't she?
Well, William and Victoria Goss got notified.
All right.
And Kathleen and Goss got notified. Oh, Kathleen Revocable Trust got notified. The attorney, Fran, is the applicant's attorney is online also. We can certainly look into it. There's not gonna be a decision made this evening anyway, Alyssa, just to let you know.
I just feel that they ought to notify everybody who lives on the hill.
Yeah, under, under the town regulations and state regulations, that's not required. But obviously, you have an opportunity to speak as a town resident, so.
Yeah.
It is a public hearing tonight, so I'm gonna mute you for now, and then we're gonna get into the hearing, listen to the applicant's presentation, and then we'll open up for comment, and we can certainly listen to concerns you have. But again, there's not gonna be any decisions made this evening.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Are we ready to open this up to a presentation, Mark?
Yes, sir.
Mark, just to clarify, is Elizabeth Sweeney on that list of Butters?
Yes. She is, Heidi.
Okay.
Yep.
What was the remark you made, or I maybe missed part of it, about a 20-mile radius?
This, under the state statute for cell towers, and this was a result of a case of a tower being installed up on Mount Kearsage many years ago. If you propose a tower in the state of New Hampshire, you have to notify every community within 20 miles of the location.
Community, not a butter, correct?
Yes, community. So every town within 20 miles has to be researched in a letter, not a certified letter, but a letter has to go out to notify them that a tower is being proposed, and, you know, this was, this was probably done 20 years ago when cell towers were new and upcoming and a lot more controversial, and, you know, we'll get letters from, you know, the city of Concord that a tower was going in, you know, or things like that every so often, so it's part, it's a state statute requirement. That's why it's, that has to be done.
Well, and again, not to side with this woman that just spoke, but it's kind of interesting. We have to notify communities 20 miles away, but we don't have to notify people two dribbles down the hill.
Well, I mean, we can certainly look at amending our rules relative to that.
Unless the community should do something more proactive to notify people, because we are a community also within that tower area.
Sure, and.
I'm thinking out loud. I'm not.
No, that's fine, and, you know, one of the things that we're gonna talk about tonight is a balloon test, and that is gonna require a public notification to the residents of the community through an ad on our website to let them know when that's gonna happen, so that people have an opportunity to go out and look to see what that impact would be. So there is a public notice for that that still has to happen, but, you know, Heidi, we can certainly chat about that, because, you know, cell towers obviously have an impact greater than, you know, a store that's going in or something like that.
And I think people are more accepting of things and more open-minded about them when they're not surprised by them. I know that something going on in my neighborhood, and it was the property owner that drove into my driveway and told me what was up before I heard it somewhere else.
Right.
And I will say that this Goss family, along with many of the McKeens that may not be a Butters, are a drivel away from where this is gonna occur. I'm just saying, there may be less controversy if we're proactive about maybe over-informing people, so to speak. Anyway, just thoughts.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, if I might interrupt, wouldn't it be more appropriate if I gave my presentation first before Butters and public people spoke?
Yes, that's, that's what's gonna happen, Fran. We just had an issue with someone that thought they weren't notified properly, so I just wanted to get that out, so that's what we're just trying to run through, Fran. Tia, are you all set?
I'm all set now.
Sorry, I don't know what happened. It wasn't me.
I bet Bill's gonna need the same thing, and Scott. Yep, they do.
All right, I asked to unmute you, Scott, so you're gonna have to unmute yourself.
Okay, I have it now. So the information.
So if you mute yourself, okay, just let you know, you can't get out of it. I have to unmute you again, so don't mute yourself.
Okay, the information is available and posted at Town Hall as well as on the Planning Board website.
Yep. Bill, you all set? Can you, are you?
I think I am. Can you hear me?
Yep, good. Okay, after that, Fran, I believe, Mr. Chairman, are you set to go?
Yes.
Okay, Fran, I think you're, it's, it's your show now. Sorry.
Good evening. My name is Francis Parisi, representing the applicant Vertex Tower Assets LLC. Whoever the host is on the line with us today is Tom Johnson, who's the civil engineer who is working with us. If you could unmute him as well, so he could participate in the discussion, that would be helpful.
Sure. Tom Johnson, yep. Tom, are you with us?
Yes, hi, good evening.
Okay, you're good.
And the other thing, Mr. Chair, or whoever the host is, I have a PowerPoint presentation with some graphics and some of the site plans as well. It might be, is it possible that you could possibly allow me to share my screen so I could, so that the folks online could see my PowerPoint?
What do you think, Mark?
I don't have a problem with that.
Is it possible?
Joe, that's possible, isn't it? All right, hold on. Oh, unmute yourself.
Yeah, so if you go down to share screen.
Yes.
And click on it.
Yep.
There should be a right tab has options, and you should be able to allow other people other than the host to share.
Says multiple participants to that one?
No, if, can you do me a favor, Mark, real quick? Can you click on my name in the participants, make me the host, all locked out for you, so this way you'll be all set?
You should just stay as host, Joe, in that way. Make host. You got it. You're driving the boat.
All right, you should be all set to share your screen. Fran.
All right, there we go.
Can everyone see my cartoon here with the cover sheet?
Yes.
Yes.
"We are here tonight seeking site plan review for a personal wireless service facility. That's a technical name for a cell tower located at 796 Liberty Hill Road on land owned by several trusts owned by the Pat nude and the Goss family. We filed an application back in December, and we're here for the public hearing tonight. As the Town Planner noted, referred to, we sent notices to all the Butters to the property as required by state statute. We put ads in the paper. It was notified on the town's website, and I think that the Planning Board meeting was properly noticed. In addition, we notified all the towns within 20 miles as required by state statute and put advertisements in many, many newspapers throughout the region as required. We are here tonight seeking site plan review. The zoning bylaw actually gives the Planning Board the authority to waive certain provisions, and we need a couple waivers here as we'll talk about tonight, and so we're not seeking from the zoning board, because the zoning bylaw allows you to grant certain waivers as required as needed. I submitted a very extensive application package with quite a bit of information. I'll plan to gloss over it tonight. If anyone has any specific questions, expect the application package. We're free to interrupt. By way of introduction, Vertex Tower Assets is what we call a wireless infrastructure developer developed. Towers. Getting some feedback. Is someone speaking?
I don't see it, Heidi.
Going on somewhere.
Yeah.
Is that phone?
Yeah, I'm not sure who's that speaking. I can't hear them. Like, I, they're distracting.
All right, I think we're good to go, Fran.
I can still hear them in the background.
I can still hear them too.
Yep, I can too.
Joe, do you see where that's coming from?
The seventy-three forty-five. So that's Keith, and it's nope, it's not me.
All right.
We've, we've been hacked before with uh.
Right.
I don't know if it's that kind of thing.
It, it seems have gone away. That's perfect. Um. Uh, I don't hear anything. Let's continue. Um, by way of introduction, Vertex Towers is what we call a wireless infrastructure developer. Uh, what's happened is the names you've heard of before, Verizon and AT&amp;T have kinda gotten out of the real estate business, have been partnered up with folks like Vertex to build wireless infrastructure. We've been very active in the uh rural New Hampshire um and northern New Hampshire market. We've recently built towers in Antrim, Sutton. We were recently approved in Marlowe and Stratford. Um, we have an approval down in um Whip Switch, and we're pursuing similar sites throughout all of rural New Hampshire, because what's happened is um, a, a, a company like Vertex has the uh, and the, the wherewithal to navigate uh land use, zoning and permitting, and all the wireless needs, and it, it becomes a win-win for towns to uh um develop infrastructure, because we can be more cognizant of your zoning bylaw, more cognizant of opiate sighting. I don't think we need to sell more cell towers here. You know, the, the uh, the uh, what's happening is more and more people are telecommuting, more and more people are using their phones for uh.
Excuse me, Fran. They're being spoken over again.
The opposite happened. The, um, the lack of cellphone coverage is actually.
Okay, I just muted everybody so we could figure out where the feedback was coming from, because there was a lot of it. So I'm gonna unmute you one at a time, so we can see where that feedback was coming from.
I'm back.
I'm on.
Coming from you, Mark.
It's coming from me?
You're the only, it's just you, me, and Bill right now unmuted.
Hmm.
I'm gonna mute you again. Let's see if it goes away.
All right, maybe it's my um, my plugs.
I don't hear it. I don't know about anybody else, but.
It went away as soon as you muted them.
Okay, so I'm gonna start muting the planning board members right now. Fran, I've also asked you to unmute again.
Thank you.
Yep. Tom, I also asked you to unmute again. All right, I believe I got all the planning board members. Is that correct?
I'm here.
Yes.
Yes.
Keith.
Mark is still muted.
Yeah, Mark is still muted.
Well, actually, it's not Mark, it's whoever she was.
Yeah.
Does anybody else find this funny?
Welcome to our new world.
Oh.
Uh, I'll also tell you, uh, Mr. Chair, I have fallen off a couple times. I'm in northern New Hampshire right now. I have a horrible internet connection. And uh, so if I keep falling off, I'll stop the, the presentation and just talk. But uh, um, as we said, you know, the, the need for better telecommunications is growing exponentially. People are working from home. Um, there's been uh quite a bit of study saying the lack of, of reliable telecommunications is becoming a public safety hazard because of so much need for better telecommunications. And in this particular instance, we've partnered up with Verizon to bring better telecommunications to the town of Henneker uh to improve um telecommunications in that northern um northwest corner of Henneker going towards Bradford. Um, why Liberty Hill Road? Um, you know, there's existing infrastructure up on um Pat's Peak. There's a good coverage in that, what I would call downtown Henneker, but in the, when you get into the the more rural parts of, of Henneker going out to the northwest, there's really no infrastructure to allow telecommunications companies to uh to, to bring telecommunications. Um, the uh, we've done it, uh, we've worked quite a bit. We've looked at a lot of different properties in that area, and we feel we found uh the best appropriate location for a cell tower. Um, what we're really trying to do is improve coverage along the, the one fourteen corridor going through um uh, uh, Henneker into the Bradford area. There's existing um cell towers on the top of Pat's Peak and then going down Route uh two oh two. Um, but it's that northwest corner where there's just a huge gap in coverage that we're trying to uh, to alleviate, and especially uh along the very well-traveled one fourteen corridor. Um, the proposed location is a huge four hundred and eighteen or nineteen, something like that, uh acre parcel, uh just south of Route one fourteen and north of Liberty Hill Road. It's a uh, uh very large parcel. Um, um, the property itself will be set back over a thousand feet from the nearest property line, uh more than fifteen hundred feet from Route one fourteen um and, and uh several thousand feet from the Liberty Hill Road. So we we picked a site that has a very, very substantial vegetative buffer uh and uh really won't have any impact on the abutting properties. Um, the compound itself is very similar to other telecommunications facilities. It's essentially a sixty by sixty foot compound um that will carve out in the middle of the woods to put in a fenced-in area, a foundation for the tower, and some telecommunications equipment. Um, um, once, you know, the construction activity takes about a month, maybe six weeks, and then it's an unmanned facility. It doesn't really require parking, because someone might be there um once a month just to check on the facility, but uh um, the, the site has been designed um to uh um be as minimally, minimally invasive as possible. We just lease a very small area. We're, we're not buying the whole property. It's just a very small lease area um setback from the uh all abutting property lines. The tower itself is what we're proposing is a monopole-style structure. Um, there's several um similar facilities throughout all of uh, uh New Hampshire. You can see them in many cities and towns. Um, I, I know there's uh one in Bradford, just at the intersection of Route one fourteen and uh right down downtown Bradford. Um, we build other types of facilities in Stratum, I, I mean, uh Sutton and Antrim, but uh we believe this is the most appropriate facility for this. The tower itself will be a single unipole with antennas attached at the top um uh for Verizon and AT&amp;T and other telecommunications companies. This facility itself is very specifically designed. Once we get through the uh uh local permitting process, the engineers go back out there and uh do a geotechnical analysis and then design a foundation very specific with soils out there. And uh, it's, it's a um it's very heavily regulated by different uh uh federal and state and uh national um engineering standards to make sure that it's designed very safely. Uh, the uh, um, I know, you know, because uh everyone always wants to know what the emissions are from these sites. These facilities aren't designed to broadcast throughout all of southern New Hampshire. It's really just designed to broadcast for a couple square miles going up and down the one fourteen corridor. And because it's a very low-powered facility, it um, it, it broadcasts at about less than one percent of the applicable FCC emissions for these types of facilities. There are similar facilities, uh, similar facilities like this already in uh Henneker and already in every uh town surrounding Henneker, and they're very low-powered facilities because we're not trying to cover a very wide area. And quite frankly, because it's a two-way communication, the phone that you use is trying to communicate with the cell tower, and the cell tower trying to communicate with the phone. And because um of that two-way communication, it's designed to be a very low-powered um broadcast. The uh, um, and, and what this does is, is fills in that gap nicely along one fourteen, connecting up with towers in Bradford to fill in that gap as much as possible. It's not perfect. We can't solve every problem. We're not uh um fixing every problem going into the next towns to the uh west and stuff, but uh I think we've done a pretty good job citing a facility that, that fills in the gap. And as I said, Verizon uh will be coming on this tower originally, so uh um, they've already uh concurred with the uh location. Um, the um, I had actually proposed uh when I filed the application to put a balloon up in the air. I know it's required by your zoning bylaw. I like to actually do it prior to the first public hearing, so we can talk about it tonight. But um in consultation with the town planner, he thought we should talk about it tonight. Um, so we're not gonna get through this whole process tonight, but uh what we'd like to do is talk about putting a balloon up in the air. We can put an ad in the paper. Uh, we can advertise it however way is appropriate. And uh um, and I think people can see, and more importantly, see where the tower is not gonna be visible. Everyone thinks when we build things a hundred and fifty feet tall, that um it's gonna be visible for miles. But as we find with respect to trees and topography and terrain, these facilities really aren't as visible as people think they're going to be. So doing a visibility demonstration helps, and we can talk to the board and schedule it before the next planning board meeting. Um, I went through your town's bylaw very uh carefully. Um, I submitted a uh um, a very extensive memorandum going through all the requirements of the zoning bylaw. We uh uh, we meet all of the requirements for a facility um with one exception. Uh, there's one um requirement that says that any tower is located within a wooded area cannot project above twenty feet above the highest trees in that area. And actually, that doesn't make sense if you really think about it, because the um, um, we're trying to cover an area for several miles, and the topography and the terrain um vary. So a tree that might be up against, you know, the terrain varies to a point, so, so that there, the tower might be above the trees in one location and then below the next hill a quarter mile away. So in order to provide the cellphone coverage, we need to be above the topography, need to be above the terrain, and uh um, um, and uh, and, and pick a location that satisfies the coverage objective with, and satisfies all the other requirements of your bylaw. So we're, we're gonna need a waiver from that specific height limitation. The other thing too is that your zoning bylaw requires us to build what are called colocatable facilities, facilities that accommodate multiple telecommunications and companies. Um, although Verizon will be our first tenant on this tower, we build it with um contemplating that AT&amp;T and T-Mobile and Sprint and maybe some other telecommunications companies in the future will come on the tower. So we've got to build a structure that has the height to accommodate and hit above the trees. The trees are actually an impediment to the telecommunications signal, because when you get into densely forested areas densely forested areas like northwest Henneker, the, the trees, even uh unfoliated trees in the wintertime um become a uh, a, a barrier to the signal. So we have to get above the terrain, above the topography, above the trees in order to provide a requisite signal. Um, um, with respect to waivers, you just have to um determine that there's no va- visual impact, that it facilitates colocation, that it uh that it, it's accommodating for the future, and that there's a um um, um, that, and that we've made provisions for uh removing the facility once it's, it's deemed obsolete. We're not expecting that it's gonna be obsolete anytime soon. We've signed a very long-term deal with the landowners. People are building more and more facilities like these throughout all of America, and the technology's not going away. But in the event that it does go away, uh we have volunteered and we included in the application a form of removal bond, so that if it does become obsolete in the future, there will be a mechanism for the town to take it down. Um, um. With respect to the general standards of site plan review, this is really a, a very passive facility. Like I said, once it's constructed, it's unmanned. It doesn't require water or sewer. There's no noise. There's no um, um increase in impervious surface, so there's no drainage issues. It's really a, a very benign and passive facility. And um in keeping with the, the rural neighbor, the rural character of the neighborhood, so it certainly meets all the, the general requirements for site plan review. Uh, and then, as you know, the uh, the federal government has gotten involved with telecommunications infrastructure development. Uh, about twenty years ago, actually longer now, the uh, the government adopted very constant comprehensive regulations to uh encourage the development of wireless infrastructure. It's at the time when they um, you know, broke up AT&amp;T into multiple telecommunications companies and, and distributed many different wireless telecommunications licenses, so that we got competition in the wireless and in the telecommunications uh industry generally. Also, because the government wants to help us deploy this technology in as many places as possible, the government has a um, um, adopted very comprehensive regulations that just basically say you can't say no. You can say, yeah, we want to hear as opposed to there. You want to have certain limitations in our zoning bylaw. But you've got to be very thoughtful about your, your um, your zoning in order to not have the effect of prohibiting telecommunications, which is what the government really wants to encourage. Uh, and there's been ample case law throughout all New Hampshire and throughout all of uh the, the country, just talking about different um ways that towns have to look at these a little bit differently than normal zoning applications because of the uh, of the great benefit for, for telecommunications. Um, and uh, um, so at this point, you know, we can talk about the plans in more detail, but what I really want to do is just kinda, I think of scheduling a visibility test is gonna be very important, because it's a uh, I think it's gonna show people, certainly the neighbors, that uh it's not that visible, notwithstanding the height that we require. And uh, um uh, and then the other thing that we can talk about is the design of the facility. Your zoning bylaw requires it to be quote-unquote "camouflaged." Um, we would argue by putting it on a four hundred and nineteen acre parcel in the middle of the woods um setback substantially from all the butters that it's adequately camouflaged. Uh, you're uh, I know other facilities in town were made to look like fake pine trees, and uh we can talk about that. Uh, quite frankly, beauty is in the eye of the beholder, and uh I'm not sure that a fake pine tree would be appropriate in this particular location, given the height of it relative to the existing trees. But I think that discussion is better suited for after we do the visibility demonstration, because if we see that it's really not that visible, which is what we're predicting here, I think, you know, the town is gonna be very much easier to grant the height waiver and to be a little bit more um thoughtful with respect to whether or not we've camouflaged it substantially. So at this point, we can open up for questions. You, I, you know, I have the site plans um uh available. People want to ask specific questions about the site plans. Probably the best thing that we could do is uh, um, just schedule the visibility test, answer no questions, and um come back at the next meeting with some pictures showing the visibility, and more importantly, the lack of visibility, so that we can talk about it more subsequently.
Thank you, Fran. It's um I guess it, we can talk amongst ourselves now. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I submitted a, a letter to the board as far as uh some issues uh that I see with the application that should be addressed at the uh, I got a email this afternoon from um that the applicant's uh engineer that I can send out to the board answering some of these issues. Um, you know, one of the questions or one of the concerns that was raised by the fire department is there's this section of road that's almost eighteen percent in grade uh near the beginning of the, of the roadway, um that they have a little concern about as far as potential access in the case of emergency. Um, they're looking at that, so they'll be getting back to us relative to that. Um, it is an area that uh has ledge, so um dealing with that great issue in that location is a problem. Um, if it has to be fixed, they're gonna have to relocate the road. Um, but we're still waiting for the uh, uh, an official comment back from the fire department.
What, what we would propose with respect to that is maybe between now and the next meeting, I'll have Tom, the civil engineer, walk the road with the uh, the fire chief. Um, the beginning of the driveway, we're actually utilizing the existing driveway that's already there. Um, and uh, we're not proposing to change things dramatically. There's an existing driveway that comes in off of Liberty Hill Road, and that's where the steepest grade is. There's also an old barn there that the, the, the existing access driveway just circumvents, and uh um, and as uh the planner mentioned, there's a substantial amount of legend. And as the planner mentioned, there's a substantial amount of ledge and bedrock back there. And blasting the road so close to the barn might not be a good idea. The uh the landowner has farmed the property for for many years and his farm. Vehicles have no problem getting up that grade. We don't think that the the uh. Emergency access vehicles are going to have any issue getting up that grade, but I think it it would be helpful for our engineer to walk the site with the fire chief just to get him satisfied with that. We're not proposing any um. Changes to the road, you know, for the first thousand feet in and then at the end of the field. Coming in off a new existing driveway, but that's not where the slope is. The slope is down in this area here right off of.
That probably be a good idea for for staff to the fire department staff to to walk it with the engineer to get comfortable with it or or express their concerns. It wasn't, obviously, it's not so much the fire trucks. As far as a fire issue, it's more emergency vehicles, rescue EMS type things that they're concerned about, especially if it's the weather's bad or it's a. You know, in the middle of winter, so.
Yeah, I'll tell you, these are unmanned facilities, so we don't plow access regularly, you know, if uh if a technician needs to go out there, they'll either bring a snow vehicle. Or, you know, if we if we had to do extensive maintenance, we would plow it periodically, but certainly not regularly. It's it's. It's, you know, they they're designed to be very passive and very uh, you know, not require a lot of traffic or road maintenance.
Well, I'm sure the chief is concerned if there's a of one of your maintenance men up there. And he had a medical emergency, then you certainly would want to be able to get a truck up there.
Right, that's the issue.
Yeah, I understand that. Our 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 technicians always go up in teams. No one climbs a tower just by themselves. There's usually a team of three that goes up there. We're very safety conscious because of that, because of the difficulty in getting access and the difficulty in a, you know. We're not expecting the 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 fire department to be able to rescue people on the tower. We do our own self-rescue. Our our crews and the consult, the contractors that we engage are very safety conscious because of that. Limited access to these types of facilities. It's the same thing.
Yeah, I wasn't I wasn't alluding to uh safety or climbing the towers or anything, but anybody can have any kind of personal medical or and see at any time, you know, they have.
Exactly.
Fran, if I might add, might add a couple thoughts there. Maybe the best thing, like you mentioned is.
Tom, could you just identify yourself for the record, please?
Sure, yes. Tom Johnson, I'm the engineer with Proterra Design Group.
Thank you.
Maybe a good path forward here, as as you mentioned, is for me to just um. Meet the the fire department folks out there and we'll take a walk and look at that first section. I think that's really probably the. The area where they point out potential concern, it's really a hundred foot long stretch of existing farm road that gets up to that. That seventeen and a half percent. After that, it's it's about five percent and actually very. For New Hampshire, it's it's pretty flat. So just that first little ramp up and and part of the reason is because it's the proximity to the old barn house there, so. We are, as Fran's showing here, we are proposing to dress it up a little bit. But to the extent that there's ledge on the uphill, on the north, I guess. The west side of the driveway here, and then there's also some ledge in the road itself. We don't. We feel like the the drainage there and and it's it's been working for a long time and to the extent that it works for our construction vehicles. In 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 and also that we can make the emergency personnel sufficiently happy with that section of road. We wouldn't propose to do too much more to it then. Uh but but also past that, and and as Fran's kind of shown here, we do have a whole bunch of other features designed on this road, even though it's not. Something that's used significantly, where as as friends' application says, you know, it's probably once or twice a month by a technician. It is a substantial driveway that we're proposing to put in here. It's going to be twelve foot wide gravel. It's going to have a drainage ditches on each side. So it'll it'll be a pretty significant driveway overall by the time we're done.
In my experience with both the Peak and Temple Mountain in Temple, New Hampshire. When they talk about once the the unit is up. And it just is general maintenance, I mean, we hardly saw anybody around. For just a short period of time, barely once a year. Uh I'm sure, you know, it can be more active and I'm sure there can be bugs, but. You know, the major transportation, whoever they have maintaining these towers, they come fully equipped trailers. Uh any kind of buggy they need to get their equipment up. We never had any issue. With any installers or when they had to do upgrades or anything else, they just went up and did it on their own. I mean. And again, you know, nothing is any more sensitive than a ski area. You're not going to let anybody just stop anytime they feel like it willy nilly to go do what they want. They all had to ask permission and whatever and it we never had any issue. And I'm sure the terrain is a lot worse. I mean it. I think the general gut feeling is is to sell it short, but they're really not. I mean, they very seldom have anybody even check on them.
It can also kind of add to that that, as you can imagine, providing cell service across New Hampshire, there's a there's a lot of challenging terrain in New Hampshire. But there's cell sites on top of Mount Washington. I've done work on top of Belmap and on top of a lot of these challenging areas, so. This site compared to those is actually, you know, as far as accessibility and ease of getting the construction vehicles in there. And overall maintenance is 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 actually compared to some of those is is not too bad.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If if you look at the access to the um. Town radios on Cranny Hill going up Tower Road, this road that they're proposing is constructed far superior to what Tower Road is. With material and drainage and likewise going up Pitcher Mountain to their um. Antenna that's up on the summit of Pitcher Mountain, this road far surpasses what they are.
I mean, the only problem that we've had on any tower that I've ever been involved with that has been pretty extensive is uh. Technology that is no longer with us. I mean, pagers was a good example. They came in and and ruined reception for everybody else. Plus, you know, they're all gone. They just never worked out, but uh. You know, it to me, it it would, knowing how infrequently they'd actually access it and everything else. And after seeing the equipment that they come. You know, at at Temple Mountain, they can usually came even during the winter if they had to go up and just check on things, you know, with vastly better equipment than we in.
Can't be a whole lot different than some of the things that public service has to get to in all weather conditions that are not necessarily accessible by road, et cetera. I mean, they go out and they could have a medical emergency too, but they go deep.
Well, I mean, it it's common sense that nothing is a hundred percent, you know, and it as much as we try, but I mean. We do have to look at the possibilities. I don't see anything that we can do anymore this evening. With this, other than maybe if Mark, should we talk to the public if they're.
Yeah, yeah, it is a public hearing, Mr. Chairman, so unless if.
More discussion from the board?
When are we going to schedule the balloon test?
When we do that after the public hearing, Scott, and we hear from our butters and then or any interested parties and then we can circle back and. We can pick a date and how we're going to organize that and snow date and all that stuff, weather day.
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, the there's a blurb on here about an airport, a private airport that's within the five mile radius and then it there's. It stated that there isn't. Can we can we solve that?
Fran, can you speak to that issue? I raised that as an issue because it it was in the paperwork that there were no public airports, which is true, but there is a private one that. If you're not from around here, you may not know, so that's something that he did respond to this evening. Fran, can you address that issue, the airport? Is he locked? Fran might be locked.
I don't even see him on here anymore.
Fran, you with us?
I don't see him.
Yeah, I am. I'm sorry. We have a bad connection. Could you repeat it, please?
A question came up relative to the airport issue, the private airport issue. That's to the south of the site. There's no public airports, but there is a private airport and and one of the board members was asking about just the the procedures to deal with that. You you wrote about it today in your response. Oh, boy.
So I would say.
We don't like to light towers and and.
Yeah, he's going sideways, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I would say that will be for another day, Bill.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can I can tell you that, you know, I I have some experience with this in this in the town of Hollis where it was close to a public airport. And I don't think this tower is going to have to be lit, but if it did, there is technology out there to limit the the strobe. Of a tower these days. We require the tower company to put in a very thin wafer of a of a beam. So that it wouldn't be visible from from everybody instead of just like a light bulb on top of the tower. It was a wherever we find and. Geared towards the air traffic control people, so but anyway, we can deal with that downstream.
Again, I think, you know, it depends upon the results of the balloon test to actually see how it fits into the backdrop because. That is down off Liberty Hill, off to the east side. And boy, if there's somebody flying down through there and they're hugging treetops, I mean, a light isn't going to help them. I don't think. If I could read, please, a blurb from Bob Garrison again concerning the cell tower. There seems to be a proposal by a landowner to install a wireless communication tower on Lot sixty five. Which is on Liberty Hill. I am in favor of this being allowed. At present, cell phones do not work in the area anywhere near my home at fourteen oh nine Bradford Road in Hennecker. And there was no service along one fourteen in this area that I can find. Cellphone technology has made it possible for people to contact emergency services without access to landlines. A cellphone tower on Liberty Hill would allow cellphones to work. Around here. My property is a butt slot sixty five. I am in favor of allowing a cellphone tower to be installed as requested.
Mr. Chair. Yes, a a point of interest, just to the north of the site of the tower, Bly Hill is two thousand fourteen feet. And Mank Hills is sixteen hundred and twenty seven feet, just adjacent to it. So I don't see any issues with aircraft coming in, hitting the tower. They're going to be into the treetops of the other mountains and surrounding area and the whole Sonopee Range. Long before they come into this tower.
Now, it I I'm afraid this falls into wrapping your kids up and. And things need to be done, but it doesn't make much sense. I don't see the need for a light, but you know, let's get through this. Let's get through this. Balloon test and see what that tells us and goes from there. Uh any other comments from the board? If not, we're going to go out to the public.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to. Down the screen here, actually. All right, so if um. If you're in a butter to the property, please raise your hand and we'll be recognized. I see Alyssa. I'm asking her to unmute. Go ahead. Go ahead, Alyssa. Just for the record, could you please just state your name for the record and your address, please?
Uh my name is Alyssa Goss. I live at four ninety two Liberty Hill Road. And a couple of points. First of all, I think it's a little disingenuous to be like, we're trying to improve communications and so we put it in the paper. We know that like most people don't get the paper or read the paper. I don't think the people who live here know about this plan by and large. It's kind of rich to hear other people who would fight having cellphones put on top of their own houses. They want to put cellphone towers on top of our house. You can say like, oh, it's not a lot of radiation, but it is a lot of radiation that will be like right on top of where I live and work. It will like, you can't have any construction up there that doesn't impact the watershed. And also, I would like to point out that we've had like a lot of arguments around here about the amount of traffic that comes down Liberty Hill Road and the reason for all that traffic. Is because this is like one of the few places that people can still come to where they can have outdoor recreation. There are like increasingly few green spaces in this town. And this is a place that people come so that they can hang out outside. And to say that there's going to be no visual impact, I mean, you can see that cellphone tower on top of Pat's Peak everywhere in town. And our hill is pretty visible from everywhere in town as well. Like, I don't think there's any place you could put it where it won't be widely visible. And I feel like if you're going to put in a cellphone tower, you should find a place along one fourteen. That has like already been used for industrial purposes and won't be on top of somebody's house in a place where people come for outdoor recreation. And. I don't see how you can put it in there without impacting the people who have lived here for decades and paid taxes and taking care of this place. And I think it's. Pretty like cruel, honestly, to do this to us, so. I suppose that is my piece. And other than I think you should do better to notify the people who live around here about the plans.
Thank you, Alyssa. Anyone else, Mark, waiting?
Please, if you have any comments, raise your hand so that we can recognize you. There's a lot of people on this call. When someone raises their hand, they come to the top of the list, so. Any butters or anybody in town, any?
Leon Parker is raising his hand on his screen.
Usually jumps to the top.
I I just found the letter from Garrison amusing because. I sat, I lived through the battle when somebody tried to put a similar power. Up on Little Gray to cross from his house and he fought it tooth and nail and beat it. It's amazing how times do change people's perspective.
Yeah, it's it's hard when you got something in your pocket that doesn't work.
Is that all you had to say, Leon? You good? Okay. Leon gets right to the point.
Well, I think too, we can take into consideration that this is this is just the beginning. Of a stream of these that are going to be headed up one fourteen if this whole plan is going to work. And you know, Hennecker obviously is the gateway. And you know, so I I'm I understand their urgency. You know, but I think we are right to the fact that, you know, we need to get past this balloon test. And make a decision on what type of tower and height will be acceptable to us. And go from there.
I don't see anybody else, Mr. Chairman. Tia, do you see anybody else? I don't know. I think we can close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman, and and talk about a date that works and we should have a snow date in case of weather.
Well, let's close the public hearing and. What what is a reasonable date? Do we have anybody that we can talk to from Vertex at this point?
Yeah, I'm I'm still here and I'm sorry, I have just a horrible internet connection. What I would propose doing is if if. What I would propose doing is if if the next meeting is February tenth, is that right? Or do you meet every two weeks, every every four weeks?
It's it's every four weeks unless we try to keep it to one meeting a month if if necessary, if we we can, we schedule is the second and fourth Tuesday, Wednesdays. So if we had to meet, we could go to a second meeting, but typically, you're right, the next meeting is the tenth.
And what what I would propose then, if it's February ten, I'm just looking at my calendar. We would advertise something for, and I'll just say, I'm just throwing out a date, February third, a week before, and that gives us some time to put an ad in the paper so that people notice, can get notice of it. I'll I'll advertise it however you want, but usually an ad in the paper is the only thing I usually do. And then the way I advertise it is if not Wednesday, the next day and the next day and the next day until it's successful, because picking a date now and trying to predict the weather three weeks in advance is a challenge. So we just gotta have a mechanism. And I I've just done this a lot of time in in town. We just had a balloon up in North Conway today where I put it in the advertisement that says, check my website, my my office website. And I'll put a notice up the day before that says, yes, we're going forward tomorrow or not. And and we can usually predict the weather the day before, but certainly not three weeks before. So and that and it's been we had a balloon up in Littleton last week that we took us three days to to finally get a weather of opportunity. We were in North Conway today. It worked. It's just it's really hard to predict the the wind. So as long as we have a mechanism to notify people that it's up or not up, then they'll have a chance, opportunity to see it or not see it.
What's what's your time timeframe from from the test to? You know, if you have the balloon test on the third, that doesn't give a lot of time for you to turn around the report. I mean, it'd be nice to have the board see that report before the meeting. Instead of just dropping it in the lap the night of the meeting, Fran.
It it takes us a short week, three or four days. So if you want to go earlier, we could go the week before. I'm just trying to make sure we have enough time to put it in a newspaper, that's all.
Is that balloon only up a day?
It's, you know, it it's really, it's hard to keep a balloon up for a long period of time. Usually we do it three or four hours just to to notify people, you know, either you're gonna see it or you're not gonna see it. I can do it as much or as long as possible, but the longer we schedule it, the least the more likely it's unsuccessful, because then the weather changes or the wind changes or anything like that.
Typically, in the past, it's been my experience that, you know, you try to set it starting at eight in the morning, the earlier in the morning, the better, because it's the air is more still. You don't want the balloon, you know, sliding and being impacted by wind, because that's gonna impact what it's gonna look like. And so, you know, from eight to ten typically is the timeframe for one day. I mean, as you get later in the day, the wind usually picks up and it can cause a problem. And again, the purpose of this balloon is twofold. It's not a small balloon. It's a huge balloon. It's how how big's the balloon, Fran?
It's about three or four feet in diameter.
So it's three or four feet in diameter, and we're gonna talk about next is where you'd like them to take some photos from. And what they'll do is is go to those locations, take photos, and then superimpose the tower on the photo based on where the balloon is. They'll be able to see the balloon in from the camera lens photo. And they superimpose it. So the photos you'll get will be with a balloon and then without the balloon and a tower superimposed on the photo to give you an idea of what that will look like from afar.
So that information will be available to people who may not read an ad in the paper and know the balloon is up there for a short period of time.
Well, and Mark, can we get something also, if you give it to Joe to put on the town website to notify people and he can shoot it out onto Facebook as well?
Absolutely.
Because the truth is, it's not the amount of time the balloon's up there, it's how informed the public is that this.
All right.
And and I would agree with, I know this is only one person in town, but even in my industry, print advertising is not what people look at anymore. It is a C Y A for us that we publicized it, but it is not where people are reading information and cleaning their information from. And that's in any way an insult to this project. It's just a fact of our lives.
We can, we can get it on any social media site that's that's that the town uses, obviously, and then to cover our bases in the in the newspaper.
But if the the information is available after the fact, then if someone missed it, they can be given that information to view, which seems fair.
Mark, if you want the photos in advance of the hearing, why don't we say? Well, I'll put the balloon up on February, January twenty-seven. And I'll put an ad in the paper next week. I should be able to get an ad in tomorrow.
Yeah, I want to, I want to get into the local paper if possible. I'll be in the office in the afternoon. I mean, I guess I'll defer to the board. I mean, would you like to see this report, Dean? In your hands prior to the meeting versus the night of?
Oh, I would, I would like it in my hand way before the meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, at least three, at least three days before the meeting, so we have a chance to review it.
I mean, it isn't.
If I put the balloon up on if I get the balloon up on January twenty-seventh, you'll have the report by February third, which is a week before the meeting.
There you go. That'll be fine.
Gives us a few days to have inclement weather as well.
Right.
Right.
Isn't like it's gonna go bad, you know?
All right, so we're gonna shoot for the test on the twenty-seventh, and then we're gonna have weather days, obviously. And, you know, Fran, I I think the earlier you get it up in the in the morning, the better it's gonna fly straight or more true.
Yeah, I I'm gonna tell you, we just had issues because daylight comes so late right now. I'll put it up from nine to noon, and I I we always try to do it in the morning, but the problem is is that it's 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 not daylight till seven thirty, and given the amount of woods that the guy has to hike into, he can't get there before daylight, so I'll have it up from nine to noon on the on the twenty-seventh.
Okay. So the next issue is where do you think if they're gonna take photos? I mean, obviously, you want them to take photos near the site on the property. But is there any other locations in the community that you would like them to try to take vantage point shots from to see if you're gonna be able to see it? Either up up on, you know, the south end of town or out on Old Concord Road, maybe, looking west. What what areas of the community would you like them to explore to see what visual impact it could be from other parts of the community?
Oh, cranny, obviously, top of the peak, either or.
Mark, I'm more than welcome to invite the board to view from my my house. I also wonder if we ought to have a shot from coming south on one fourteen, south of Day Pond.
And north coming from.
Kind of by Bob Garrison's entrance.
Okay. At Bob's house, Scott, or?
Out on one fourteen, coming coming south right by Bob's house.
Wouldn't you do it north and south on one fourteen and east and west on two oh two? That would give you a real visual.
Where where along two oh two, I do, you think?
I don't know. I mean, you can see those windmills that are in Antrim two oh two.
Yeah.
So I would.
I guess.
Least as far over as Ready Mix. It tends to dip a little bit after that in elevation, doesn't it?
Right. Yep. Well, the trees get close to the road, too, so.
Right, and then maybe at the top of the hill coming out of Hillsborough, there's a couple dips there. Near that turnaround, there's one high spot where there's no cell service.
Probably from the blueberry fields there, just west of the on-ramp for one fourteen onto two oh two. Those big open.
Yes. Yes.
I think from that angle, it'll probably be blocked by Liberty Hill.
Yeah, I would think it'd have to be at the top of that knoll where that turnaround is, maybe.
Someone has suggested from Long Pond.
I don't believe you'll even, I was on Long Pond this weekend, and I don't believe you'll even see it. You see the top of Pine Hill from Long Pond, but you don't see anything left of it on on Long Pond.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you where towers are visible is when you have a vista. You see the tower on Pat's Peak from Route one fourteen and Route nine, because you've got eight lanes of asphalt. And so when you start saying along Route one fourteen, Route two oh two, those are more likely to have visibility than in the middle of the woods. Maybe on the other side of a pond, like you mentioned, we can certainly go there, but you know, think about places where there are vistas. Because if you have a tree in front of your face, whether there's a hundred and fifty foot tower behind you, you're not gonna see it. So and then same thing with topography. We can do some topography analysis based with topographical maps to just say that, you know, there's no way, if there's a a thousand foot peak and we're at eight hundred feet, there's no way you're gonna see anything behind it. So and I'll also tell you you don't have to decide tonight, as long as you communicate it to Mark up until the day before, we usually plan it out the 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 right before, like the evening before. So at any point in time, if you said about here, a park or a school or any kind of vista that you think that there might be visibility, you can just get that information, Mark, and we'll certainly go there.
Well, a good marker might be some of the houses at the top of Pine Hill, including, you know, some of the patenod properties you can see coming up one fourteen. So if this hill is higher, that might be a good vantage point. I'm just using landmarks as examples. You know what houses around town you can see from the lower points looking up.
Yeah, Leon suggested maybe looking at Liberty Hill and Western Ave. I mean, we can, we can get you a list. So I I guess to Fran's point, if if people have thoughts, obviously, tomorrow or the next day or two, I'll generate a list. I'll then send it out to the board to make sure everyone's comfortable with it. And we can go back and forth and and get them a a list that everyone's gonna be happy with as as happy as we can be, anyway.
The only thing I'll tell you, the only I'll tell you are, we engage consultants to do this. They do this regularly. And they just don't like on private property, certainly not in the wintertime because of this safety, but any any public vantage point they can go to.
Yep.
Mark, could I ask Fran a question?
Sure.
Fran, am I correct by looking at the topo map that this tower is sitting approximately a hundred and fifty feet below the summit of Liberty Hill?
I'm gonna defer that one to Tom, but let's do this real quick.
So the ground elevation at the tower is a thousand and three feet.
And Liberty Hill's eleven eighty.
Yeah, so it's got a, it's got a backdrop of of the peak behind it.
Yeah.
So the the tower is sitting a hundred and seventy feet below the summit of Liberty Hill.
I don't see this sticking out all that much. I'll be surprised. I'll be excited to look at the balloon.
Heidi, I think the best vantage point is gonna be from my house, and I don't think I'm hardly gonna see it at all.
No, and and you're not, no offense, but you're not a highly traveled area. It's not like driving up to two oh two and staring, and I'm not even bothered by them, but staring at the windmills. I don't think this is a overly focal point that we're gonna be staring at. I don't.
I'm more frustrated staring at my phone, wondering why it won't work.
Yeah, like when you used to go to Bradford and you had to be in a certain spot, standing on your big toe, leaning a certain way to get a cell reception. Everybody wants their cell phone to work. They just don't want what goes with it. So we just have to be able, as a board, to be able to inform the public and show them what they want to see. Yeah, the Pat's Peak Tower is much more visible than I think this will ever be.
You can see the Pat's Peak Tower for miles because it's at the peak and and we just built one in Sutton, just past, it's really on the south side of Sutton by downtown Bradford, but it's as you go past downtown Bradford and look over the lake there, you're heading towards Sunapee, and you see it across the lake. It's really a very, and it's never in your windshield because the lake's off to the side. We just built one in Antrim on the opposite peak from the windmills. And quite frankly, the windmills are a bigger visual attraction than our cell tower. No one looks at our cell tower anymore. I think I think you'd be surprised how many cell towers are in this area of New Hampshire that you just don't see based on the fact that one, we're getting used to them, and two, they're just not that visible. The the windmills, just for point of reference, the windmills are probably four hundred and fifty feet tall. Usually, the the turbines are about a hundred three hundred feet in the air with a hundred and fifty feet of blade on each side. Our our tower is about a hundred and fifty feet, so it 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 just it's shielded much, much more significantly just based on topography and terrain.
Oh, Ryan would know how tall those windmills are, right, Ryan?
That's correct. He gave you good data.
Well, I think I think we just need a motion to table. If there's no other questions or comments, Mr. Chairman, until February tenth.
Sounds good to me. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion. We table this article until the next planning board meeting.
February tenth. Six thirty.
Perfect.
Tia?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
I will also concur with that. Dan?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we'll see you on February tenth, and and any any more vantage points, just let Mark know, and we can certainly go there.
Very good. I'll start the list tomorrow, Fran, and and get it to you in the next week or so.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, good night.
Moving on to he is presentation of the C I P project, which I'm I'm sure she's be very happy to hand that on. Has everybody had a chance to look it over? It was like trying to take a drink out of a fire hose wide open. It's a lot of information. I don't know that I've absorbed even a portion of it. My general comment, for what it's worth, is is seems very thorough. I also know the amount of people that they've had issues with being part of it. Nothing irritates you anymore than simply being ignored. But it Tia? Why don't you throw up your your PowerPoint presentation and dazzle us with your splendor?
Okay.
Can we have a promise for us that we're not gonna see it in its entirety?
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna try to go quick. Okay, so some of these slides we've gone through in the past, but I'm just gonna do a brief run through just to refresh your memory on where we are. So the C I P is gonna be the long range planning document. It outlines our anticipated expenditures for capital projects and equipment for a period of at least six years. So we're looking at the benefits of preserving health and safety and welfare, anticipating the growth of our community, improving the communication coordination between departments, but also other municipal entities, and then avoiding the huge spikes in the property tax that we've seen in the past. And supporting the economic development initiatives, especially with the two R S As that we just passed this past year. And the piece that we have not discussed further is the foundation for the impact fees, which the planning board will have to discuss in the future. So the committee was formed under, originally under the Board of Slockman, and it kind of went by the wayside, and the plan was dissolved between two thousand and five and two thousand and fourteen. And we finally were able to. And we finally were able to return some, back to some of those capital reserve funding strategies. And then in two thousand and nine, we were reconvened under the planning board. So currently we have members. Myself, Bill Marco, Heidi Okoye, Rocky, Bostrom, Leon Parker, and then Bruce Trivolini is also assigned. However, he was absent during this year's. Report period, and he did not attend any of our meetings. I know myself and Bill Marco also reached out to him. So for the committee work, we worked with the different departments and entities within our community. To reassess and create the, you know, the portion of the CIP plan. We looked at the inventory of equipment that's covered by the Capital Improvement Program. And then we also took that process from two thousand and nineteen. To review the expenditure requests that were gonna be coming in from departments and other entities. So we use those documents to then start calculating out the long term funding strategy for the town. And recommend the timeline for purchases and implementation. So for the long range charge. Which some of that information you're gonna see within this report is the classification and urgency of some of the projects. That are asked to, to be funded, also the recommended time sequence, total costs, and then. The amounts of existing sources of funds and additional sources of funds. And this goes through, you know, some of the financial consequences, which we'll briefly go over this evening. Looking at priorities of the community, community and recommended, recommended plan for financing. And so what is a CIP project? So we looked at expenditures, cost commitments of at least five thousand dollars. Before any external funding and has an expected life of at least five years. And this could be acquisition of land for public purposes, could be construction for. For example, like a new police department and then public infrastructure. And this does not include the cost to conduct or prepare the surveys or studies that might be needed. One would be, an example would be the Fire Pond that came up in one of our Board of Selectmen meetings. And so as part of the process, we have implemented, implemented the project submission forms. We spoke with the department heads and committees. And that's done on a yearly basis after they're reviewed. Same thing with the equipment, inventories are conducted every year and updated. And then they're analyzed and put back into the CIP plan. So each project is reviewed and classified under one, which is urgent, two, which is necessary. Three year timeframe, then four to six years, then we have deferrable cost, premature, and then inconsistent. With our community goals and land use planning. So the big notation is the information that's in the plan. And is approved this evening by the planning board. It doesn't go beyond this current budget year and it's non binding. And it must be resubmitted by all departments. So within the document, which is an appendix E, you'll see the updated vehicle and equipment inventory. Which records types of equipment, condition, expenses over and above routine maintenance. And then the commitment on condition of repairs and other concerns that they have with performance or mechanical issues. An appendix A through C, that's where we have, where the projects are actually managed on the CIP matrix. It outlines the cost of anticipated vehicle equipment and other projects that have been identified. And then it has, it's the implementation of the vehicle and equipment inventory. So we have the CIP matrix, which we just discussed, which is the vehicle equipment, which is the first is appendix A. Then you have the fund flows, so you can see what it looks like when you have the different allocations. And then the actual CIP impacts. So we started out this year. With the CIP funding request from departments and then the updated vehicle inventories. And then we took what we had. Received at town meeting in July and we input, put those appropriations into. Our calculations to see where we were gonna fall. And we updated the estimated valuation that came through the. Partial revow this past summer. We then conducted a full review of all the capital reserves and expendable trust funds for long term balances. With the anticipated capital expenditures. Through the review, the committee found that based on the twenty twenty appropriations. That some of the capital reserves and the trust funds were inadequately funded to meet the basic operational and service needs within our community. The largest shortfall is the highway department. The two thousand nineteen CIP report requested a hundred thousand dollars of funding. The Board of Selectmen budget deliberations, funding was cut to twenty five thousand and was approved at town meeting. The reduction resulted in the CIP reserve balance of twenty nine thousand dollars. And this year they're scheduled for a truck replacement, which is in need of two hundred thousand dollars. So the allocation, based on what happened at town meeting. Created a shortfall in the long term funding strategy to guarantee funds that would be available for equipment. That's needed for just general daily, you know, department operation. So CIP addressed this issue by reevaluating and restructuring the schedule of all capital expenses. We reviewed every piece of equipment that was in the inventory in detail. And we modified all the timelines for replacements for all departments. We do want to take a moment to stress that all departments and municipal entities. The equipment and projects appearing in CIP is not guaranteed and should not be purchased or started just because funds are available. We stress again that routine and preventative maintenance plan should be developed. And carried out to preserve it and extend the life of the equipment and vehicles to have them operate at the highest levels possible. So after the initial review of the vehicle replacement timelines, the committee. Reviewed the annual allocations needed to adequately support the capital reserve funds. Just to support the basic life safety needs of our community and to once again flatten that. Scale of our tax rate. We started out, we ended up having a, a great discussion with the Fire Chief Jim Morse. And we also had a discussion with Highway Superintendent Leo Okoye. Through that discussion, the Fire Department, we were able to schedule out vehicles longer than twenty five years, which. Had been originally reflected in two thousand nineteen report. And the Fire Chief, after reviewing the funding balances and the fund flow. Supported the reduction in the allocations made to the Fire Department Capital Reserve over the next five years in order to get the highway reserve. Back up, you know, to the amount that we needed to have it solidly established. In speaking with Leo Okoye, the vehicles were viewed for his department and. They were pushed out longer than the original timeline after twenty twenty three. We also had a chance for the first time to meet with the Henniker School District. We first met with the school board and presented the CIP purpose at their December second meeting. We received current documents that they classify as CIP prepared by the school system. And we met with Zach Lawson and Chris Roy from the SAU. After a long discuss, discussion and review of those documents. Those documents are very preliminary in development and they need further development and need to be refined to actual. Actually meet the CIP definitions. So we're gonna be working with them, the school district, after the twenty twenty one bu- budget preparations. For incorporation into FY twenty twenty two. So also through our review, we talked about bonding of capital projects. We had a couple of requests that were large in scale. And we'd like to avoid the bonding of future expenses if possible and use it sparingly. It should be reserved for projects that are identified as priorities and. That the community is not able to fully fund through capital reserve appropriations. We also have to be aware that municipal expenditures were only allowed to do three percent of equalized evaluation. Under the Municipal Finance Act. Our current debt surface is three, about three hundred thousand dollars and. This year, some debt will come off the books. However, new debt anticipated, we have the, this year an additional. Potentially forty percent of a three point two million dollar wastewater bond. That would be for, you know, the entire town, while sixty percent would also be. Charged to the wastewater users. Twenty twenty seven, we have potentially construction of a new police facility. And then in twenty forty, we have a four million, forty million dollar wastewater facility upgrade. So. Due to the lack of funding currently available for municipalities for wastewater upgrades. We need to try to limit the amount that we're bonding so we can. Reserve those bonding funds for the large scale priorities. So in reviewing the requests, we had. All the requests come through. The committee and we classified them as one through six. And those funding recommendations are actually, they start on page twenty of your report. So for the Henniker Fire Department, we had a request for the replacement of the two thousand and six extrication tools. We determined it was necessary for this equipment. The Fire and Rescue Departments use these tools for, to extricate individuals from vehicles during accidents. They only have one set of these tools within the department. So we did find that this was an adequate request. Looking at their capital reserve, they are fully funded at their request amount of forty two thousand dollars in their fire equipment capital reserve fund. So that will be. Taken out of there and it, there would be no additional tax dollars that would have to be appropriated. For the funding of the Fire Department Capital Reserve, based on the conversation that we had with Chief Jim Morse. We would be recommending that this year that the Fire Department appropriation be fifty thousand dollars. For Henniker Rescue, the CIA Committee, CIP Committee evaluated the funding for the Henniker Rescue Squad Capital Reserve. That total amount would be seventy thousand dollars. We received sixty thousand dollars out of the town of Bradford through that contract. That money, just like in years past, would be deposited into the fund through this Warren article. And the Henniker taxpayers would have ten thousand dollars remaining, which would be. You know, come through taxation. And if the sixty thousand dollars were not, if that were not to be come through from Bradford. We would only be appropriating ten. For Henniker Highway Department, there, there's a request for the purchase of a new ten wheeler dump truck. We have determined that that is necessary. It is a, the request is for a fourteen foot ten coat type multipurpose body. With complete plow package to replace a two thousand and six yellow Freightliner as frontline vehicle that two thousand and six. Would then be converted for multipurpose use. Serving as a tanker during the summer months and then an option to remount the sander body for plow operations during the winter. The tank would actually come off the current nineteen eighty nine tanker that's being used. And that would be sent to state auction. The nineteen eighty nine vehicle has had some larger issues. And the two thousand and six Freightliner would be. Replacing that in its purpose. So this Warren article is two hundred thousand dollars. Due to the. Funds that are available currently in the. Operating budget that would be going over to unreserved fund balance, we're requesting a hundred and fifty thousand. Come out of that unfallet, fund balance, unreserved fund balance and only fifty thousand dollars would come from taxation. For funding of the highway equipment capital reserve, which I've just spoken about. In order to get the department fleet where it needs to be through the appropriations where. We were recommending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the highway equipment capital reserve. To adequately fund their replacement costs or future replacement costs. This appropriation will lower and stabilize during future tax rates once the capital reserve is adequately funded. And you can actually see that in appendix B. So the Warren article is straightforward of a hundred and fifty thousand. Henniker Transfer Station, we had a couple of requests. We had a replace for a skid steer. Which we found premature and also not at this time. In support of our community goals on, based on what they're using it for. Same thing with their Ford Fire Truck. That they wanted to replace. There was also a request to fund. Transfer station building repairs. However, the funds that they're requesting are already in their operating budget, so. We did not support this request this year either. For Henniker Parks and Recreation, there was a request for a new lawn tractor after thorough review. There are currently four mowers at the Parks Department. So. We did not, we thought that request was premature. We did support that two thousand five hundred. Be allocated to the Parks Equipment Expendable Trust for the FY twenty one budget. For the Henniker Police Department, Police Department Equipment Expendable Trust. Once again, we're recommending the ten thousand dollars for the replacement of their MBTs and. Their weapons that were originally given to us as a donation. For the funding of the potential new police department building, CIP was still in support of that. And we're recommending that to be funded at a hundred thousand dollars. For the town owned building expendable trust, we have two buildings that are, that need to be painted. We did discuss cost savings such as utilizing the Merrimack County House of Corrections Work Program. And breaking down the painting into phases to ensure completion. And then we also had a request from the town administrator to look at mini splits for the town hall for air conditioning. And then potentially as an additional heat source, we recommended that as premature. We found that. Through the discussion that we need to replace the furnace, which is thirty two years old. And that's the primary heat source for the town hall. So we believe that the mini splits is premature. And the replacement of the furnace should be the priority. And through that, you know, research of the furnace to also look at the installation cost of AC. So we're requesting the, the appropriation of twenty thousand dollars. Town Hall Technology Expendable Trust, this is. I, I think through the committee discussion, it was probably the most discussed and we have put this as urgent. A number one and a number two. This was established last year and twenty five thousand dollars was appropriated to it. It definitely needs to be a priority over the next two years. To upgrade our financial and accounting software within the town hall and to improve efficiencies and security. And also to improve the reporting capabilities. Across the community and open up some of the. Payment options for residents. Currently, our system is well outdated and unsupported. And is hosted onsite and backed up on external hard drives. So we are asking for a hundred and twenty five thousand to be put into that trust fund. Our town administrator has also gone out and started talking to companies for this project. It's still in the preliminary phase, but the hundred and twenty five is. It's still in the preliminary phase, but the 125 is something that the committee felt comfortable with. Road Maintenance Expendable Trust Fund from the Road Management Committee, still recommended at 750,000. There's a couple of projects like Western Ave and Patterson Hill Road that we, that are not completed yet. So bills are still outstanding for those projects. However, for FY 21, they, they're focusing on Bennett Street, Elm Street, Depot Hill, all of Hillsborough Road and Circle Street. So the total cost of all the projects is like 1.3 million. However, we'll use the 750 in combination with the 250 in the highway operating budget to complete the project with any remaining funds in the road maintenance expendable trust. Revaluation, so we just had the partial revale. However, the town administrator is looking at doing 20% of our community each year to kind of stabilize, you know, stabilize that amount that's coming in and to make sure that it's not constantly in flux. So we don't have these big gaps in the, in the revale. But regardless of what we choose to do, 25, this will have to be funded regardless for a larger revale if we were to choose not to do the 20% each year. Bridge repair, this is just the routine one. So we don't end up in a situation like we did on Western Ave with having to bond millions of dollars. The wastewater treatment plant, the 3.2 million, we, we discussed this as well. This was on the docket for last year. So this is being recommended as a 60/40 split between users and non-users. We're looking at right now estimated interest rates of 2%. They're looking, it's estimated at 195,000 per year, split by the users and non-users. So we've used the same Warren article recommendation that we've done in the past for this one, which would be a ballot vote. Through the wastewater discussion, we did come up with some recommendations, especially since we have the $40 million cost anticipation in 2040. So we're hoping that the planning board will review, you know, as projects come forward, review development guidelines and ordinances related to new construction and connections to water and sewer and start the larger conversation with even potential developers looking to develop within identified commercial and residential locations to increase the system users, if possible, by extending the connections available. We're also recommending to the sewer commissioners to review current funding allocations and to look at revised billing structures so that heavy users are charged an increased fee based on the amount of flow coming from their businesses and profits and commercial locations. So the type of flow and chemicals used within the facilities have increased costs associated with maintenance of the plants and treatment of the sludge being processed. The Tucker Free Library, they once again submitted a request for accessibility and expansion of their facility. In 2000, our 2019 report, it was 2.2 million. This year was over 2.3 million. We reviewed it. We asked some follow-up questions. Those responses are actually in your, the 187 pages that were provided to you in Appendix D. And after the meeting, our meeting on December 28th, they did notify the town administrator that they would not be moving forward this year, but they would be moving forward next year. So review of the matrix and fund flow. Are you able to see that?
Yes, it came up.
Yes.
Okay. So all of the expenses have been included. So for 2021, you can see the 2007 Freightliner and the schedule of vehicles moving out, and this is the highway department. You can also see the fire department and their schedule for replacement. So for the fund flow, when we're looking at the fire department, you can see the $50,000 and the slow gradual increase back up to where they were. Even with their expenses that have been programmed in here, they are adequately funded moving forward. Same thing with the rescue department through the allocation of the $60,000 that is coming in from Bradford. You can also see the 29 that we're starting out with this year in the highway equipment and see what the 150 does. When we looked at just what, you know, what $100,000 was going to do, we had deficits, I think, pretty much every other year. The transfer station, we are not currently going to be proposing any capital reserve fund for this year. The Board of Selectmen is currently looking at efficiencies within that area and they'll have to make the determination moving forward on how they want to proceed. All departments at this time, based on the capital reserve funding that has been allocated, are funded at a level where equipment can be purchased and evaluated moving forward without significant impact to the taxpayers. When we look at the CIP impact for 2021, it is similar to what we've experienced in the past. Let me go over here first. So we have the tax impact with no CIP. You can start seeing those huge increases, especially in 2025, 2026, and definitely in 2027. And through the actual appropriations proposed by CIP, you can see how the first two years, there's, it's higher than normal. But as we start getting into an actual steady flow of funding, it starts to flatten out. So you can, so it's not these up and down sharp increases that we've seen in the past. We looked at through the tax, CIP tax impact. We also calculated in other revenues. So with the highway department, using the 150 from unreserved fund balance plus putting in the 50,000 that is not included within their CIP, utilizing the $60,000 from Bradford, we actually dropped that rate to 2.60, $2.60. Bill or Heidi, do you have any additional comments? And Leon Parker is also on the line as well.
I mean, we didn't, nor do I think we need to go over when each department has a request, but we discussed at length that just because a piece of equipment comes up in a given year does not mean it would automatically be replaced at that time. It would be evaluated, its useful life would be evaluated, its condition would be evaluated, and it could quite possibly get pushed out further.
I think the power of this whole program is looking at that line of the tax impact. And without it, you see these huge spikes and you're just, everybody's going to just pull their hair out over high tax rates when you see those. And by funding these capital reserves and looking at the expenditures and spacing them out appropriately, we're able to bring that down to level. Now, that not only makes the taxpayer a little bit happier, but anybody looking to come to our town for, you know, along the lines of economic development would look at a town like that and say, hey, they've got their stuff together. It might be a good place to go and do business. So there's, there's a lot of reasons for doing this and we hope that the suggestions are adopted by the board.
Tia, you got one, one slide where you said we're going to ask for appropriation of 20,000 and the words going with it, say 15, that's something we can deal with later. What, what we're trying to do this time is the same thing that we did 10 years ago. We spent a lot of time trying to even out the tax bill so you didn't have a yo-yo with, you know, going up five or six for $10 one year and now eight and next. And some of us feel rather strongly that that's an appropriate way to go. We'll still have, you know, some major stuff like if we build a police department building, we aren't going to be able to cover that between now and when it's needed. And the wastewater situation is a really dire circumstance from a bunch of points of view. One of them being it is so damned expensive to fix the things that are worn out that have been there since 1976. So if we can keep the tax rate down and reserve our bonding space within what we have for money to keep the DRA happy, when it comes time to do, either through normal planning or through emergency repairs, we, we have some space to do bonding on some of that stuff.
Questions from board members?
I don't think it's as much a question as, as I have yet to be able to figure out why CIP was suspended by the town at any picture and time, you know, and, and saw that yo-yo tax rate that we're talking about. And I mean, if this is the result of good planning, even though we may not be too excited about, when you add up all the math, we've, it's, it's just necessary. We just have to get on board and do it.
Well, and this is just for our basic services, right? That, you know, resident, like this isn't for the over and above request that we have received. And the larger thing that the planning board really needs to pick up in this upcoming year is the discussion of impact fees. You know, we have some parts of our community that utilize services or the, the growth of our community and department increases are, you know, kind of focused on those entities, on why they've expanded so much. And if we're going to start really honing in on economic development, we need to start looking at the long-term future and the impact fees. I know people are, some people are against them. But if you do this in a right, the right way, you can actually get some additional funding from the economic development to help offset some of these costs.
The other, the other thing I'd mention is that we will have the same kind of discussions that we had eight to 10 years ago over and over again, because there's an attitude on the part of some people. And there was one key member of the select board back when we went through this before that very strongly believed that any major improvement, any major equipment that needed to be bought should all be bonded so that the people benefiting from it would be paying for it instead of people that weren't going to get much use for it for a while. And that's one of those arguments you've just got to roll with and decide where you sit on that one.
I think it's, I think it's important to mention too, you know, we see that tax impact, that tax impact that you're looking at right now does not include any revenues. It is just a straight tax impact. So when we actually look at what the tax impact will be and we factor in the revenues, it's going to be less than what you're seeing at that 260 mark right now that you're seeing this year. So I just, I just want to throw that out there. I know that's a scary number for people to see, but that's not really where we're sitting.
Right. And, and, but we also have to be cautious as the state, you know, starts looking at their, their funding mechanisms and starts pulling back some of the stuff that we anticipate, such as the highway block grant. And Joe and I've had discussions on that funding level, which seems to have decreased for this upcoming year. We need to take that all into consideration.
The state, it turns out curiously enough, after their gloom and doom predictions six months ago, are looking at more income than they had planned on and more than even their income would have been without COVID. So, you know, we can go back and say, hey, guys, you're back where you used to be, give us what we used to get.
Tia, rather a rudimentary question, but on the timeline of who needs this report next? I know we're right in the midst of the budgeting committee.
Yep. So we are actually scheduled to be on the Board of Selectmen's docket this upcoming Tuesday, the 19th. I got the day right, right?
You got it.
Too many meetings. So we're scheduled to be on their docket, the 19th, to present this to them to hopefully also have them accept the proposal. However, they might accept it and we know that there'll be further budget discussions as we move forward. And I think some of those discussions are already happening.
Good, it would be good to have the planning board's support are going to the select one.
Yeah. And each year, I'll just make sure that I reinforce this each year. And even in the upcoming months, we're going to be continuing to reevaluate the plan. You know, we're, I've started pulling data from our previous operating budget so we can start projecting out, like even with the increase of the operating budgets increase, you know, there might be increase of demand based on potential economic development or growth in other areas within our community that could impact this. And so trying to develop a comprehensive look at some of the previous budget finger, figures and capital reserves expenditures and then projecting them forward into the future based on, on our growth.
Any other questions from anybody on the board? Mike, do we open this up to the public?
It wasn't advertised as a public meeting, Mr. Chairman. So at this point, it would be if the board's comfortable with it, you can accept the subcommittee's work and then forward it to the selectmen.
I, I, I would strongly recommend that we do that. I mean, I just, it, there's a certain percentage of everything that's just unpopular. We're never going to please everybody. You know, there's things in there that don't please me. But the idea of it is, is, is on a whole, this all has to move forward to level, to keep this level. And I, I don't think we can argue with your people or your committees' work. We just can't. But we can, we can lash out and say terrible things, but that's very non-productive.
The lashing out is more against certain things that are needed in town. This mechanism is good planning toward those things, whether we like them or not.
It's excellent planning and, and planning comes in many forms and financial planning is, is critical to keep the tax rate at a stable rate. And that's the whole idea behind the CIP. So it's a, it's a very useful tool.
So that when it blows off, you can pay for it.
Well, it also gives taxpayers an idea of what's coming down the, down the line. You know, a lot of people aren't on sewer and, and that's going to be a huge train that's coming at us. But, you know, we're talking about it now, but it's 10, 15 years up. But it's good to let people know that, you know, that's a huge investment in the community. And as Tia said, everything down there is super expensive.
And if we go over it each year, then it's not a big surprise. People are, you know, it's a process that they're going to go through with us.
People hate surprises.
Right.
Yeah. And, and we did speak with, you know, department heads and we spoke at length about, you know, the vehicle timings and trying to stress the importance of preventative maintenance. And I know Joe's working with department heads as well to get a preventative maintenance plan together for each department so we can start getting these vehicles used for longer time periods.
Not unlike how we handled the roads.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, this is Keith. Can I speak?
You certainly can, Keith.
Okay. Tia, I just have one question, similar to Leon's about the discrepancy in one of the Warren articles. On the Hennecker Rescue Squad Warren article, the background versus the recommended Warren article, is that slipped the numbers? It, one says that we're going to leave.
Yes, that, that's a typo on my part in the slide. It's correct on the, in the book. In the 187 pages.
He's got sharp eyes.
No, I got the book and the book says, which by the way, thank you again, you, when the bum beyond delivered this book right to my house yesterday, but it just, the book says $70,000 to be added to the ambulance capital reserve fund. 60,000 would be added deposited into the fund if we don't get the money from Bradford. It should be 10,000 if we don't get the money from Bradford.
Well, it started out at 70,000 and the Bradford contribution is only 10, isn't it?
Yeah. And we looked at this piece. So I don't, I don't know what happened there, but I can make that, that change before it goes to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. I just figured we ought to be doing what we can to help them out too, before they get it.
Yeah, I will make that edit and have that note noted for the planning board as approved.
Thank you.
Have we heard from everybody? At this point, I would entertain a motion. Make a motion that we send the CIP report to the select board for their review.
I'll second it.
And we also need that it's been accepted by the planning board or approved by the planning board.
Can we blend that into the?
Yes, you can do that.
We're about to vote on it.
I think what Tia is saying that we've got to state that we are accepting it with changes of mistakes that were today. And we are willing to send it on to the Board of Selectmen for their review.
Okay.
So if somebody can interpret Scott and I together. And we had a second, didn't we?
Yes, I second that.
Tia?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
I am certainly a yes. Dan?
Yes.
And Keith, why don't you get in there?
Yippee-ya-ay, good work.
I would, I would really, really like to thank this committee, you know, like it's a long haul.
Lot of work.
I think you've done quite, you know, again, everybody can find little tiny bits of fault and I just, I'm just sick of that. It's a, it's a wonderful job. And, you know, hopefully with now with this established again, you know, with, with the public will get used to it and use it as a guideline to see just how it affects us year by year and improve some of the problems we run into. Because Lord knows Leon and I have been around long enough to see what happens without it.
Yeah. Well, and it's also a good starter for the planning board to start discussing potential opportunities to bring in economic growth and expand some of these areas like water and sewer as well. You know, maybe there's some tax offsets or additional, you know, area tax incentives that we could implement to make it more attractive.
Well, there's just certain things I think, you know, we've used the same terminology over again, that we've got to change the name, put some lipstick on them and change a hat, you know, to get it through, attack it from a different way. But it, it, again, there are sensitive subjects that have been going on for years and there's never been a resolution. And throwing up your arms is, is not a solution. Been a long meeting, people. And I thank you all for the attendance this evening. Would someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Third.
And while everybody just chant off as we click the little X in the corner. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, great.
Take care.